May call this meeting the Williamsburg James City County School Board Order. Good evening, Ms. Serza.
Good evening.
Take your role, please.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mrs. Cordasco?
Here.
Ms. Emanuel?
Here.
Mr. Fuentes?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here. Certification of closed session. Can I have a motion for certification of closed session?
Mr. Chair, I certify that at best of each member's knowledge that Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, law, legislation, and open meeting requirements, as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, and considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Emanuel. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Serza?
Mr. Fuentes?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mrs. Cordasco?
Aye.
Ms. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. 4.01, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
The move in the second for approval of the agenda. Is there any discussion? Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mrs. Cordasco?
Aye.
Ms. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Fuentes?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. 5.01, announcement superintendent's report. Dr. Constantino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tonight, I'd like to update the board on construction projects that have been occurring and occurred this summer. First, Phase Two of the refurbishment of Jamestown High School is on time. Only punch list items remain, and the school was ready for open house this afternoon. Also at Jamestown, work on the tennis courts is moving forward on schedule, and the contractor will be laying the asphalt soon. The track project is a little behind schedule, but we're confident it will be completed long before the spring sports season. We've completed several smaller construction projects this summer. New fences were installed around playgrounds at Clara Bird and DJ Montague. The tennis courts at War Hill High School were patched, and also, we have patched several parking lots in the division. Finally, as detailed at your last meeting, work continues on the design of the fourth middle school. We'll be providing the board with additional information on this project at the September 15th meeting. And that's everything I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any board members have any announcements at this point? You good? Okay. Couple of things before we meet again. Our opening of schools is next Tuesday. This is one of the few years in which our board meeting does not coincide with the opening of schools due to Labor Day and also the late start of our schools because of Labor Day. Anything you want to say about Mrs. Larson?
I'm good, yeah. I think we all know how Mrs. Larson feels.
I know teachers have been going back to school. I thought our convocation that we had last Friday was very good and very well received, and so, thank all the staff and Dr. Constantino for putting that together. And after convocation, Mrs. Larson and I went to the operations awards gathering, and I thought that went very real well, and fortunately, Marcelo's didn't sing. And then, we toured Jamestown High School and saw the construction projects there. And so, I thought those, the second floor where all the renovation was done, it looks really well and really good, and I'm hopeful for the next summer when we get the first floor done as well. Any other announcements at this point? Assistant's comments. Do we have any cards?
No.
No cards? Okay. Moving on, 7.01, memorandum of understanding between WJCC Schools Foundation and WJCC School Board. Dr. Constantino?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the board, you directed the formation of a public school foundation to enhance learning opportunities for all students. The WJCC Schools Foundation was formed and is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) entity, established for the purpose of promoting, aiding, and encouraging educational activities and endeavors connected with the Williamsburg James City County Schools. The memorandum of understanding that's before you for your review and approval establishes the guidelines and expectations of the partnership between the school board and the foundation. At the foundation's August 20, 2015, meeting, the Board of Directors for the WJCC Schools Foundation unanimously approved this MOU, be forwarded to the school board for your approval.
I certainly can answer or try to answer any questions that you might have. Do any board members have any comments or questions about the memorandum of understanding? Ms. Cook?
I am curious if it will be possible to include some sort of review clause in the language that allows an opportunity, because this is a new endeavor, for both parties to just assess the successes and see if the MOU and language needs to be adjusted in any way, shape, or form at some point in the future.
That's a good idea.
Let me make sure I understand what you're saying to me. A review of the MOU, so you would like a sentence that states that at some point in the future, this MOU would be reviewed?
Or, yeah, in the future, a single date, or a certain intervals, whatever the board thinks is a good idea. But that would be my recommendation, because this is a new organization and a new relationship, and just to make sure that it's working for both organizations, it seems to make sure, and it seems like a good way to just have it be built into the operations to kind of check in, if you will.
That would be most logical, I think, in section number eight, if you want.
Yeah. That'd be good.
So...
Will be reviewed annually?
Is annually too soon, or is...
I'd say three, in three years, or something like that, so you know. Because sometimes, these things don't get off the ground really well first. One year feels a little short, you know, but...
How about a three-year review? Would that be appropriate?
That's what I'm thinking.
I'll add that language, or I'll...
Talking about articles?
I won't add that language. I will talk to the foundation executive board. I don't see where that's an issue. I can't imagine it's an issue. And if not, then we will add the sentence and underline it for the next meeting, so you know it's there.
I just have a word replacement on the third whereas, where it says whereas the school board and the foundation want...
First page, Jim.
First page.
Page one.
Uh-huh.
Rather than wish, replace it with want. Want to contract with one another. I just have magic.
Ms. Emanuel?
I like your suggestion, and I think it's important, because we don't know how this is going to play out in the community, and it's, we definitely don't want this supplanting public funds, and that's my concern with this whole thing, is does it supplant local funds?
Foundation, yeah, that's a good question. The foundation has been very clear in their intent, I think their founding documents. I also gave you at your seats this evening, the articles of incorporation and also the bylaws. At some point, the board would need to review and approve those documents as well. And if possible, one suggestion, or one request I have, which, if it doesn't happen, it's not the end of the world, is if the chair would be amenable to adding those documents to the agenda item and approving all of them, or modifying all of them, or whatever action the board takes on the 15th of December. If not, then I can bring the two other documents back in October.
Okay. I'm kind of feeling like October, so that we can have a chance to...
You said 15th of December.
I said 15th, I'm sorry.
September.
I heard September. You might have said December.
Okay, okay. I heard December, okay.
But he could be right.
Right.
I understand. It feels like we want to do it in October, because I think there's a lot here for us to read.
Okay.
And if anybody has anything they want to discuss, I don't want to get them...
Well, we'll attach them again, but just for your information you have on this evening.
Mr. Fuentes?
Couple of questions. From an accounting perspective, are they going to be, are they going to be considered a component of WJCC?
No. They're a separate entity.
Totally a separate entity, and they're not considered a component, as other foundations are?
To my knowledge, they're a separate entity, no. I don't know the meaning of the word "component," but they're not attached to the school system in any way.
Okay. I mean, that's, and Ms. Burt, Ms. Berta, all right, all right. So, they're not attached. The other thing, and let me back up a little bit, so what, I must have missed something along the way. What is the, what are we going to do with this foundation once it's in place? What is its purpose?
The purpose of the foundation is to allow for the awarding of learning grants to teachers so that they can add innovation and creativity to the classroom. The purpose of the grants is not to supplant public funds, and that's been very clear in the discussions with the foundation and in their documents. Their purpose is to enhance teachers' ability to be creative, to be innovative, to do things perhaps that they wouldn't be able to do because the money isn't available. Each teacher who is interested would be able to submit a small grant. It can be anywhere between a couple of hundred dollars and maybe a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars. A group of teachers could submit a grant on an interdisciplinary project. There's an entire process that's been created and laid out by the foundation. They've announced that process to the teachers this past Friday. Those applications went to all teachers in the division on Friday. And there is a blind, a blind system of looking at the grants and awarding them, and they'll award as many grants as they can afford to award based on their success in fundraising this first year.
All right. I mean, I share the concern, Ms. Emanuel, of, and I've said this before, my concerns of bringing a foundation and supplanting money, or the expectations down the road, that our intentions are one thing now. Down the road, the concern of the expectation of the foundation covering things that normally a public school should, as a community, as a community, the community should be supporting the public schools for improvement. And I'm using a simple example here. A playground, for example, which some could argue is part of the educational education, maybe not, but the argument could be made, well, your foundation can cover that. You know, things, and I'm not saying that that's going to happen, I'm just saying that, and I'm using that as a simple example. But the concern about supplanting money in certain areas even more, and even, even more, the line starts to become gray, where that line's a playground, clearly, okay, that's one thing, and then you start getting closer to the classroom. In fact, you just said, to give teacher their grant, to possible teacher grants and other things. And that's where I get concerned about the need of a foundation.
Are you good?
Sure. And Ms. Larson, it looks like she wants to respond.
Well, frankly, if you want to worry about that kind of creep, we probably should have worried years ago, because PTAs have probably been supplementing for schools for years.
Yes.
And not in a, the way they were supposed to. I think we've done a good job as a division to clean that up, probably in the last X amount of years, but I'm sure they paid for things that, you know, we used to get PTAs to supplement when we couldn't do things, and we weren't, you know, we never said, okay, well, you know, keep in mind that if you put this at, for example, Rawls Bird, please remember, that's not Rawls Bird's property, that's WJCC's property. So, we're frankly behind the eight ball with foundations. There are very successful school foundations all over the Commonwealth, I'm sure all over the United States for that matter, and that, you know, Trawl City, York, just our neighbors, New Kent, and so, you know, I, while I understand the concern, you know, I can, all I can tell you is being your representative on this board, you know, they have worked very hard to make sure that we have guidelines in place that we are going to follow, and it's about innovative learning grants. You know, they're not, first of all, you know, we hope to be very successful in our fundraising, but it's only going to go so far. It's not going to be able to probably buy a playground, frankly. And that's not the purpose. The purpose is to spread it out as much as we can. So, the more grants that we can give for 750 to a thousand dollars, the better, and the more, you know, kids that we hope we touch. But, you know, we've got a whole array of people from representative of the community, and they're very clear on the role and what they want to do. But, you know, it's time for this school division to be in this game, and to be, and the teachers, I think, were really excited. I saw tweets immediately after the convocation and probably during, sorry, Dr. Constantino, but, and, but again, we've worked very, very hard to make sure that there's a clear line on what they're going to support and what they're not. And the last thing I want us to do, frankly, is to, you know, I understand concerns, but I want to be very careful that we, you know, don't go too negative, because we're trying to do a kickoff breakfast on October 13th and get this community behind us and excited about something that our neighbors have been doing for years, and have been able to do some pretty exciting things with, at their school division. And I want our teachers to have that same opportunity. So, but, you know, I'm happy to go back and ask questions, and again, but I can just tell you, I've sat in every meeting, the prior meetings, and it's very clear on what the role is and the expectation, so...
Mrs. Cordasco?
I guess one of the questions I had, and I don't know if this is a legitimate usage of funds, but, for instance, last year, we had a big issue with a change in the way that they allowed us to use funding for kids that are in the Career Tech, or some of the Future Farmers of America, some of the other contests that our kids have won. There's a big change in the interpretation of how we could use funding. Would that be something as well that would be an applicable use? Because public funds aren't available, and we had a number of students that were not able to participate in the contest that they had won, because they didn't fit the requirements of a quote-unquote "special population," and were not able to be funded to celebrate what they had done so well.
At the present time, the answer to that question is no. The foundation has been very clear that they are limiting their work to grants between, and I don't know those numbers off the top of my head, but I think it's like 500 and maybe 1,500, $100 innovative learning grants to teachers. There's no consideration of bringing programs in, there's been no consideration of that. That is not to say in the future, as the foundation evolves, that things won't change. But this memorandum of understanding, the bylaws, all these incorporated documents are very clear that if the foundation's focused, if they decide that they want to change to do something like that, they'd have to come and talk with you and get your permission anyway. So, right now, it is clearly focused on one thing, and that's innovative learning grants for teachers.
Mr. Nichols?
What about the Teacher of the Year Awards? Who's going to do that?
The superintendent's advisory committee has asked that they retain the opportunity to support that. And again, that would be out of the purview of the focus of the new WJCC Schools Foundation.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just want to say that I am actually excited about the opportunity for philanthropic dollars to come into the division, and so, this provides that pathway. But I, we see all over the country examples of replacement philanthropy, where philanthropic dollars have, over time, replaced that which has typically been the responsibility of government. So, I'm thrilled to hear that that's just off the table for this. And then, to your point, Mrs. Larson, about PTAs, you know, oftentimes, that can actually highlight inequities between school populations, and so, this has the capacity to not do that. So, I'm excited about that. I spent some time online looking at the application. It was, I was very impressed. It's incredibly well-considered and really high-quality, I think, and it's not burdensome. So, it really strikes a nice balance between thorough but easy, and so, it was clearly well-considered. So, whoever did that did an exceptional job.
There was a committee, and they worked very hard on doing that. So, everything is a committee-driven, it's a committee-driven foundation.
And so, yeah, and I'm very grateful to the volunteers who have spent their time doing that. But I have a question about the process of funds being awarded to the division. So, other foundations who grant funds, it comes through the budget process. I presume that it won't be part of, it'll go through the schools, the way like the school accounts, is that, I'm just curious about the mechanic?
Once approved by the board, Ms. Berta and I actually had a conversation about this, because that was a question of the foundation. When they award the grants, who do they write the check to? And once approved by the school board, the checks will be written to the school accounts, and then the schools will give, allow the teachers to spend the money that they've been granted.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Nichols?
When a citizen wants to make a donation to the school division, the only way to have done that in the past was to do it directly, and sometimes, it may not necessarily have been within the way the school division would be able to have administered anything with that. For example, money has been given in honor or memory of a student that passed away. Has there been conversations around the table at the board for that kind of receiving of those kinds of funds?
No.
Yeah, I'm sure that's going to come down the, be part of the conversation, because we're just now, the board is 100% giving board, and several of you have also donated. So, but we're really doing our kickoff in October to start, so that is something that we can take back.
The board of directors and also the executive board of the foundation, and I will say to you, and you'll see this in the documents, the superintendent and a school board representative hold seats on the board of directors, and the conversations, there's a lot of questions, I think you would agree with me, where they look to us for guidance about, you know, is this something? The whole conversation has been, how can we best support the schools? But I think that the foundation is in its infancy, and they're going to wrestle with some questions. Some, a donor may come up and say, I wanted to do a particular kind, and the foundation's going to have to figure out how to do that. I think right now, they have set a reasonable goal, but it's not a goal that I think is outlandish, and I think we're hoping for some success the first year, so that it can inspire greater success in the second round. But there's been talk, you know, there's been, some of the board members asked about, what if somebody were to, what's the word?
Planned giving.
The planned giving. And we, you know, you've been, we've been working with a consultant now for about a year, and the consultant said, it probably isn't going to happen in the beginning, but we have, we have procedures, and we have everything to discuss that. Should somebody come forward and say, you know, we want to deal with a planned giving. But at the present, I think they are looking toward, they're building websites, they're trying to get a video done, they're trying to get a kickoff done. They want to award the first round of grants in January, and incredible work by a group of citizens, you know, who are just, all of this is being done by a board who has also given 100%, so...
Just from my experience, I think it's important to have those kinds of policies or procedures in place for receiving gifts, because it's really difficult to generate those policies and procedures when the gift is at the door, because generally speaking, if it doesn't work out, they take the gift and give it someplace else.
Right.
I can check in with the development committee, because they may have addressed that, and I can find out.
I think the other question, other half, part of it is being part of GuideStar.
A part of what?
GuideStar.
Oh, yeah.
So, because it's a very helpful organization, and it helps, it helps the public know what the strengths and weaknesses of the organization, through the Form 990 and so forth. And it generated right here, it started right in Williamsburg.
Any other comments from board members?
Well, I can see somebody, in the same way that you were describing, Steve, but I can see somebody saying, well, I want to, I want to have my thing go to Jamestown, or Matthew Whaley, or whatever, and that could get unbalanced, and so, I don't know how we might deal with that, because...
At the present time, that's just not possible. I mean, you're going to give a donation to the foundation.
Okay.
The foundation has a process to award innovative learning grants to teachers. It's a completely blind process. So, at the moment, you can't give money to a specific school or a teacher.
Good. I'm glad to hear that.
Yes. I just want to make sure I clarify for anybody who's in the audience or who's watching this. As we are wont to do, we look at all the hazards that we could fall into, but I think I speak on behalf of the entire board that we're very happy about this foundation, very excited about it. I thought Clarence did a great job on Friday introducing it to the teachers and generated a lot of excitement with them, and I want to thank him and all the board members who have stood up, because I know a couple of them personally, and it hasn't been without work, and they have, they have gladly, seem to have gladly put it in, and it has been a long time for us coming to get to this point where we have a foundation. So, I think it's going to be yet another tool in our arsenal to help meet the needs of our students. All of our, all of our, just about all of, I think, all of our neighboring school divisions have a foundation, and they seem to have gotten through all those traps. So, I think the innovation, being able to fund the innovation for our teachers, and have good pilots, good metrics, and see what their successes are, then maybe, as a board, we take that innovation and extend it out throughout the entire school division. So, I think that's going to be a good opportunity for us. Ms. Larson?
I just was going to mention that there's board members, but there's also people that are working on the committees, and they've been working very hard to, and they don't currently sit on the board, so I want to make sure they're recognized as well, many people in the community.
Mr. Nichols?
Just, one of the things that would be helpful, too, is maybe get a list of who's on the board and who's on the committees.
So, any...
Yeah, so we can show appreciation, thank them for their work.
Well, yeah, I think all the members of the board of the foundation and those who work with the foundation, the members of the administration who have helped support this, this has, this has not just fallen out of the trees and happened. This has been a lot of hard work and a lot of good thought put into this, so I appreciate all that, and we're very excited that's...
It's almost eight years coming.
With that, we'll put that, we'll put 7.01 on the agenda for next time. 7.02, authorization permit city-county use of school buses?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, as you know, periodically, the public schools receive requests for transportation from the city and from James City County. State Code 221182 requires the school board to approve the use, and I would remind the board that the Virginia code states in part, "The school board of any school division may enter into agreements with the governing body of any county, city, or town in the school division, any state agency or agency established for identified purposes of United States public law." I read that to remind the board and to remind the public that the school system does not engage in the private requests for use of transportation. We limit, we would limit this to requests from the city of Williamsburg and James City County.
Any comments or questions from board members?
This has always worked well.
It's a yearly thing. It's always worked well.
I don't know, how much is the, how much is it utilized?
It's not significant. I think, I think we support, I think we support one of the races in the city every year, transporting participants, and I think we have one day in the county where we support. I don't know that it's real extensive use of the buses.
Okay. Any other comments? So, put that on the agenda. 7.04, financial and human resources payroll system analysis and recommendation. Dr. Constantino?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I have informed you over time that we've experienced and experienced some issues with our payroll and HR systems, and those issues have become a little bit more acute, and I'm reminded of something that Mr. Fuentes has said from time to time, and saying that while we're, while we're building infrastructure and technology, let's not forget the operational side of the house. And I think that this presentation you'll get this evening will give you the parameters of what we're proposing in terms of an upgrade and replacement, a necessary upgrade and replacement to financial and human resources and payroll system for the school division. And Mrs. Berta and Mr. Baker are here and would like to share some information with you, and certainly will take any questions that you have.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dr. Constantino, we are here to present to you the proposed agenda item relating to HR information, payroll information database. Several updates have been provided to you on numerous issues of critical outages that we've experienced over the past 18, 24 months, and several attempts have been made to work with our current provider to address these deficiencies, and they still remain unresolved. HR, finance, and technology have all reviewed the options available to us, and resulted in all the teams, all three of us, our departments recommending a vendor change. Recommendation is to switch to Tyler Technologies/Munis. By having one system, it will allow us to be more efficient with multiple departments using the same data. This should allow us to have a more business-like process that will be more consistent, complete, and accurate with our data. The system will work for us, not us working for them. The system will work for us, not us working for the data, for the systems. As identified by the APQC process, this will eliminate some of the redundancy in HR and finance of keying some of the same information, and this will also provide an enhanced employee self-service system, like entering your own lead.
So as we look at what the system will cost, we can enter into a seven-year contract with Munis, with an annual cost of $267,277. That provides us with long-term pricing without a change unless we want to expand the system and be able to use all of the resources that would be available to us. There would be one-time costs that we would need in fiscal year 16 to begin the implementation and setup of that system for $92,555. And just to note, this is a current increase over our current vendor by about $63,000, but there are very many unknown variables that we have with our current provider. One, we just found out last week that they had been acquired and merged with another company, and we had no notification of that, along with the issues that we've experienced and the communication gap that we have with them, and being able to correct those deficiencies that they see in their system. And we have no guarantee of a price escalation happening over the course of seven years if we stayed with that current provider.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Go ahead. Back on the last one, just to clarify, annual cost is 267, and the increase, so presently we're paying like 200?
Yeah, and I'll get to that in a slide, I actually have it outlined, so you can see it.
Okay, so we'll get to all that later on?
Yep.
Okay.
So what we will bring to you along with the contract is a way to fund that. We currently have an operating unreserved fund balance on the books of $500,000. Our request to you would be to allow us to use up to $300,000 in the current fiscal year to support this project. In year two, we would budget the 267, 277 into our fiscal year 17 budget, plus the remaining about $20,000 for implementation costs that would occur in next budget year, and we would need to budget our current IFIS cost, which is a little over 200,000, 204,164. So next year, we would need to budget the dual system in order to get us converted and, and onto the Munis product. So, and here's a little bit of a timeline. We have taken the recommended Tyler Technologies/Munis timeline, their recommendation, and we have compressed that timeline to make sure that we are with the most aggressive implementation timeline that we can possibly endure, to make sure that we properly implement this system and make sure it's set up correctly. We don't want the same issues that we're experiencing to happen in the new system. We want to clean up our current system and make sure we have clean data going in. So, we will present to you on the 15th, a contract for your approval with the hope that you will approve that. If you need some more time, we've built in a month so that we can have more discussion if necessary. So, we would go live with beginning our business process review. The system implementation and configuration would start in October of 2015, and that would run all the way till December of 2016. July of 2016 is when finance would go live. That's a clean break because that's the end of a fiscal year and the start of a new one. And we would continue on the HR payroll side until January of 2017, when we would go live with that. That date's a good date for us because that is a clean break with your W-2, any affordable care, health, health reform, reporting that we have to do, as well as just a natural break in tax tables. So, from January to June, we would run concurrent systems to make sure that what we're seeing and we know is, most of the time processed correctly in our current database, is the same thing, and we get a mirror image in both places. You always want to do that just to make sure we have the right thing happening from the business perspective. So our next steps, we are currently reviewing a cooperative contract with Alexandria, the city of Alexandria, but we are pairing that with some WJC specific terms. And RFI information was reviewed, and we made sure that our costs were in line with that cooperative agreement, that we were getting the best bang for our buck. We've also added some performance measures. In our current contract, we have nothing to go to if the system fails. It fails, we have no financial recourse, nothing is built in. This contract would build that in, where if there's downtime, depending on the percentage of downtime, we would get a percentage of financial compensation back for that downtime. So again, we will present to you on the September 15th meeting, a contract, and hope that we will have your approval to move forward with this much-needed project. You have any questions?
Ms. Cook?
Can you talk to us about the benefit of the cooperative contract with Alexandria? Did I use that right?
Mm-hmm. They have a, a pretty substantial terms and conditions package that gives us a lot of recourse should things go wrong in the system. They did a very good job of outlining what-if situations, and, and we really liked that because what we're experiencing now is we have no out clause with our current provider, and the communication is just very lacking. So, we wanted to use that cooperative.
And you talked about the price over seven years, if, if the services are the same. What services are you not recommending purchasing now that kind of, that would be nice to have?
There's some modules that do bids and contract performance, there's e-procurement. There's pieces that we can phase in, but we really want to get our core business system implemented and get our, our end-users used to using that before we roll out all of these products that become overwhelming.
Mrs. Cordasco?
I guess my question was, even with the merger, there was no opportunity to do something different? That was not, and how longstanding of companies were we talking about in each of these circumstances? The one that merged and the one that we're looking at, what kind of a business history are we talking about?
I'm not sure of their business history. I know we've been with Sun Guard for 14 years. The company they merged with was FIS. I personally don't know much about them, and, and it bothers me that we weren't informed before the actual merger happened. No communication.
Ms. Larson?
With the additional cost, but do you think that you've spent that on going back and with all the issues that you've had with our previous system, so that this will make, make up for itself, most of that expense?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes, can we go back to some of those earlier slides?
Yep. Tell me which one?
Well, we can go back to the, like, the second one, I guess?
This one?
Yes. Well, back up one more, I want to make sure that it's not, okay, next, next slide, I'm sorry. All right, so, annual cost 267, we got that, there's a one-time setup fee, and the increase over, the increase is 63. And I concur, you know, if we need to go, you know, this though sets up the example that I've always said with software vendors, and, and making sure you understand what you're getting, because there's always a divorce cost, which is what it looks like we have here, based on what you're showing. Because you're saying the first year, there's a very high divorce cost with, we have to pay, we're paying the old vendor and the new vendor for concurrent services?
It's because our current, our new Munis vendor would not be completely set up. We need that time to make sure that what we're pushing into the system works properly, and it would give us a clean break to get away from IFIS at the end of our contract cycle.
Okay, so, well, I just want, and I want to make sure that we all understood it, so it's 267 plus the 200 the first year, plus, plus the 92 for the first year, right?
No, it'll actually be the, it'll be three-quarters of your 267, because we would begin implementing in October.
Okay.
So it'd be October through June.
Okay.
And then we would have a portion of our implementation and travel, training cost, which is 92,555.
Okay.
In the first year. That's the request to use the fund balance.
Okay.
And then in 17, we would build in all of those costs into our natural budget cycle to get us onto the new system and off of IFIS.
Okay. And, um, I'm, okay, I must have, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed something somewhere, because you were saying it's, right now for IFIS, it's 204.
Correct.
But you're saying next year, is that's going to be prorated, or the 267 is prorated?
The 267 would be prorated in fiscal year 16 as part of our first-line fund balance request.
Okay.
Because it wouldn't be a full year. We'd be three-quarters of a year, starting in October for our fiscal year.
Okay, and then when it gets full year, then that goes to?
267, 277.
Okay. Oh, okay, I think I'm figuring it out now. And then, after, after we're in this now, we're good for seven years, and then what do we have in place? Now, are we, are we part of the other contract with Alexandria, is that what you said?
It would be a cooperative with Alexandria, yes.
Cooperative, so are they managing the contract?
No, we will manage our own contract.
We have our own contract.
Mm-hmm.
So what, do we have, did we leverage off their terms and conditions for ensuring the software at the end, like, and for software upgrades, and for support, and making sure that when we get to year seven, that we're not kind of doing this again? Or, or, there's nothing that's going to stop that, because you never know, these, these guys have a way of forcing you to do stuff like this, but.
That 267, 277, over the course of seven years, is inclusive of any upgrades that they push out to all their other clients. So there should be no additional increase unless we choose to add modules that we don't purchase out of the gate. Then at the end of the seven years, we would have to go back to the table because times have changed in seven years, and naturally, in the course of business, you have inflation. So they would pull us back to the table, but we have guarantees that they won't charge us more than what they're charging other customers.
So, and then I think it was Ms. Larson that said this, so dovetailing off her, piggybacking off her, where her point was, the additional costs that we're paying, is there going to be some sort of benefit that, does it end up paying for itself over the course of seven years that we're doing this, right, is what we have? Is the system's now, I guess you're saying, what I'm hearing is it's somewhat cumbersome? Does it have, you know, the bugs, the, you know, the other things that are, the inefficiencies?
Yes. From what, from what we have seen, we will gain a lot in the new system for reporting functionality, elimination of redundancies, things that we currently don't really have a good process for because the system doesn't allow, we can develop those processes within the new system.
And is this more built up, shared, like a shared data environment, or like a database where other softwares can talk with it?
Yes.
And pull things out?
Yes.
Into, and in fact, your others, the software, the other software program that we fought a couple of years ago?
Student management system. The student management system.
Is that the one that does all the reports and pulls all that stuff out? Or there wasn't, there was one that you got that does all the nice, pretty pictures? And, you know, has all the dashboard stuff and all that?
Uh.
That's designed to go and, and query?
Yes.
And, and do stuff? I, I'm just wondering, is that been, is, is there, has there been discussions or thought of, and maybe they're so separate and so different that you can't do that?
It's a good question. The key to all of this has been to automate things that are presently not automated. So, if we can start to eliminate human touch on, and double, you know, double entries and, and things that are simply not efficient, we start cutting down on the need for overtime and that. But yes, so we're looking at ways in which we can populate dashboards and reports that don't require us to go and make a dashboard, or make a report, or handle load something in, that can be automated from system to system.
So, okay, so, and I don't know whether it's possible, and I don't know whether it's been thought, but I'm just, where I'm going with that is, you know, you have all this data over here, and then you've got the software over here that puts together the dashboards and things like that based on different pieces of data, and pulls them out of some sort of server and gets all the data. So I just was, based on what you're saying, you're saying this is some sort of database that's collecting all the information, so it's, it's, I'm hoping that it's open enough that if you need to pull reports out, let's just say you need a report to go to, you know, when we go to do our joint meetings and things like that, and you want to do some report, I'm sure it's got built-in reports.
Yes.
But, but if there's other things that we want to do above and beyond that, where we want to develop our own reports, where we go and we can pull stuff out to make, to do that, that's, the whole shared data environment that everybody's going to, unless they're so proprietary that they don't want people doing that, that's, that's all I'm asking. Anyway, something to think about on that. I mean, I guess, you know, if we have to do this, we have to do it, you know?
Any other board member comments on this? The, the, I think some of the points have been brought out, the 63,000 additional with the overtime that we've had to keep this on life support has been, we could probably cut a little bit of that down and save that. Can you just go one more slide for me real quick?
Uh-uh.
Yeah, to this. So in, in July of 2016, finance goes live. The finance, is finance going to be concurrent on both systems? Or are you going to go to one?
We will be concurrent for a period, but not for that whole entire period of time.
Right, okay. And so then, and so then payroll comes on, or HR and payroll comes on in January, and then they're going to be concurrent for the rest of that fiscal year.
Correct.
I know, I know we have heard stories of coming within a hair's breadth of missing payroll, which is, which, 63,000, we touched that pretty quick, and, and other issues that we've had with that, with the current system. Can we live to June of 17?
We hope.
Is, hope, is that plan?
I truly feel like we have taken a look at their recommended timeline, and we are as aggressive, as aggressive as we possibly can be with this proposed timeline.
Yeah, because, I mean, this is, this is really, at the end of, at, you know, we are in a people business, we educate students, but we pay people, and this is our business, the finance and HR and payroll. And so I think this is, this is pretty important, that this, that this be a robust system and work to support our, our folks, so we're, I, I think the, I think we're very supportive of, of doing this, so.
It's long overdue.
It is long overdue, and that's why we're in the hope to June, June of 2017, which seems like a long.
That's concerning.
It seems like a long way away, so.
Yeah, that's.
I'm, I am good with putting this on the agenda to approve next meeting, I don't know any.
I am.
Anybody good with that? So, anybody have any questions for?
No, just that it's not like the old days where you could just, you know, take your check and run down to the bank and do whatever. I mean, people have automated debits coming out, and it would, it would be a tremendous hardship for our employees and staff to, to have missed, missed payroll. And, you know, I always say that one of the, the things I've learned a lot from being on the board is that you don't know what you don't know, and you sign up for what you sign up for, and if it doesn't end up working out to be what you needed, it sounds to me as if we're doing a pretty thorough vetting process on this, and, you know, kind of have to spend some money.
Yeah, thanks for all, all the good work there. 7.05, June Flimery Financials and Year End Spending Plan.
Jim.
I'm sorry.
Let's set the catty corner here.
Oh, I was just going to do a little institutional history, where we once were not paid, and it was, because we went, they, they didn't have the system to pay us, and so, it'd been two months, and so we had a little demonstration, right?
Two months? Two months?
And we had, we had signs and stuff, we got it back, but we got it the next day, but, you know, it'd been, that was a terrible experience.
Well, now, I don't know how many payroll checks are right a month, but 1,700 or...
1,800.
1,800 paychecks a month, that's, I don't think we're set up to print and.
By hand.
Print and sign and lick and envelope and, it's a disaster, so.
Exactly.
Sure, we'll get a few cards and letters and few emails from you.
I'm sure you'll get a few emails. 7.05, June Flimery Financials and Year End Spending Plan. Dr. Constantino?
Thank you, and I'm going to just turn this over to Ms. Berta, who can highlight this year-end report, and also the spending plan.
Yeah. I want to notify you that in your, at your station, there is an updated page. Somehow, the final PO on there for Sonny Maryman for the school buses was only reflective of one school bus in your original report included in your board doc. So we have updated that to be reflective of the six buses that we did purchase in June, so I want to share that with you to make sure you have that.
So we purchased those in June?
We did.
They deliver in?
Marcellus, do you know when they're coming?
October.
Thank you.
You're going to come pick up Mrs. Cordasco at her house?
Take her to New Horizons.
Yep. Not until after tonight.
Well, true.
So I want to, I want to review with you the year-end spending plan request that we will be forwarding on to city and county with your approval. You can see that at the end of the fiscal year, we had available fund balance of $1,279,823.
It's on page three.
Yes, page three. With those funds, we would like to propose to the city and county the purchase of social studies textbooks for $180,000. The, the last social studies adoption for the division was in 2003, so it's been quite a while since those resources have been updated. Additionally, we want to request eight replacement school buses and one additional school bus for the New Horizons Center. What that bus replacement would allow is some flexibility in our smoothing plan that has been developed to replace nine buses annually, but it also gives us an option to be able to look at some of the tier issues that we experience. So that gives a little bit of flexibility in that. And of course, the. experience. So that gives a little bit of flexibility in that. And of course, the one bus for New Horizons is because one of your board members, Mrs. Cordasco, is, is really pushing for that and we listened. So that has been added. So we will be asking for the complete return of all of our fund balance dollars available at the end of fiscal year 2015 to our appropriating bodies. Are there any questions?
Mr. Nichols.
Well, I'm, I'm pleased about the buses too and particularly to try to adjust tier system and also if the, which will address the middle school issue at Talano, right?
We have, we have three, three real goals. One, of course, is the smoothing and the replacement plan to make sure that not only do we have the appropriate buses on the road, but we have the appropriate spare buses because there's a maintenance rotation and other kinds of rotation. The second issue that we have is the middle school tier issue. This, this proposal would move us closer to a resolution there. And then, of course, the third issue is the biggest issue and that is the division tier system and having the buses necessary to right some of those issues that the board has talked about. So the thought process behind this advancing the plan was to advance the plan. We have this opportunity. We have these needs. These needs have been clearly discussed by this board for a long, long time. The New Horizons issue is an issue, is a customer service issue for our kids. It's a programmatic issue for our kids. It's doing what is in the best interest of our students and the tier issues. And so we just think that if we have this opportunity to advance the ball a little further, we should take it.
Miss, go ahead, sorry.
I'm certainly supportive of that and I'm supportive of what I see on the list as making use of the, the end of the year money.
Mrs. Cordasco.
I guess one question and one comment. I would be curious to know the difference in mileage for new buses. My suspicion is that we would probably be getting better gas mileage for new buses than old buses. And also I'd be very curious to know the amount of maintenance that goes into keeping a 15-year-old bus on the road. I know there's been some commentary about that sort of being an arbitrary figure, but we are not Newport News and, you know, one long skinny place. We are, we are up and down and curvy and all around. And I think that we put a lot of miles on, on our buses. So I'd be really interested in that. My suspicion is, again, that there is a cost savings involved in a newer, more efficient piece, piece of equipment that takes less time and I'd like to see that factored in. The second question is, you know, should this, this proceed forward? What kind of a timeline would we be talking about? Would, would it be possible to have that additional New Horizons bus on the road for the second semester for kids that are looking to that? Or is that way too ambitious of a, of a hope?
Mr. Snipes is afraid to commit to that. He's smiling and doing this. We would try, we, I don't want to publicly commit to that. We certainly would, would try to do our best to get it here and get the bus going as quickly as possible.
Okay. I think, yeah, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure that people really understand why that's an issue. You know, we, our high schools start early. They start at 7:15. Because we do not have the appropriate number of buses, the children who choose to go to New Horizons or Governor's School go even earlier because they have to be picked up a half an hour earlier than brought to a central location where all of them are taken down in, in a bus. And I, it's anecdotal. I can't prove it, but I believe that there are children who do not take advantage of that wonderful program because of that issue.
Absolutely.
And so, you know, I, I don't think that there's a great desire. We, we have put a lot of time and energy into things like Manufacturing Day. We are investing in building relationships with our community, with our businesses. There is a lot of interest in some of the things that we have to offer that wouldn't necessarily mean that somebody would walk out the door of high school and go to, go to a four-year college. We have, we don't have the resources, as I understand it, to have that kind of a caliber of program with that wide of a spectrum within the county and the city as we have it. But we have a great partnership with other school systems. We have a, you know, new building coming online that's going to give us additional options. We have the ability to put a kid in a situation where they can leave high school and make a good wage somewhere and perhaps have their tuition paid for. There are kids that are saying no to that opportunity because of not having the bus. I don't think that's right. And I don't think it's foolish to add that as an expense because it's not an expense. It's an investment into our children's lives. And so that is why I have, you know, I've been a pain about it and I, I'm sorry. But I, you know, I served on that New Horizon board as, as Mr. Fuentes does, has done. There's great work there. And so.
And I would agree with you. And I would also say to add to that, that the New Horizons and Mr. Johnson's work recently with his really done an excellent, excellent job with the new strategic plan, the visioning.
Yep.
The programs that we want to bring into New Horizons. That partnership is the only way any one of us, any one of the six school systems can deliver that level of technology, that level of program. And so when, when community members say to me, I wish we had more, our answer to this problem is we do have more. We just need a better way to get them there. And, and that's been a problem. It's been one of those transportation problems that we've had. You know, with that said, I would, Mr. Tyler is here and this is the time of year where if Mr. Tyler had hair, it'd be falling out. But.
He'd be pulling it out.
I want to, I want to publicly just thank him and his staff for the job that they're doing this summer, especially with the new GPS system, the new routing system that's coming online. They're going to field thousands of phone calls in the next week and they'll do so with grace and professionalism. And I know Mr. Tyler to be a guy that says when you ask him to do something, he'll move every mountain possible to get it done. And if he can't get it done, he'll tell you exactly why. So in terms of when we can have that bus, I'm pretty confident we'll have that bus as soon as we can. And if it's the second semester, great. If it's not, it'll be because, you know, we just, we just couldn't pull it off. But we're making progress.
It seemed possible, but even mid semester, you can make an adjustment. It's just whether I, and I would, is it out of line to ask for those figures as far as the mileage and/or maintenance records?
Uh, no, I, I'm, we don't have, we could figure that out. He's saying, yeah, we can get that to you.
Because I think it's important to, to say that we're not just arbitrarily replacing things, that there, you know, we can give the, this is what we've tried to do in every other situation is with our process, we're trying to explain why is it that we need to do this? You know, could there have been things we did differently? Sure. But going forward, how are we going to do this? And so I'd be, I'd be interested to know that because I think it's something that people don't think about.
I think the other point you make about the geography and topography of James City County being very different than a compacted city. Our buses are traveling farther, farther distances, longer routes. We put miles on buses faster because of the geography of the county and the city. And, and if we were a compacted city, you know, we would see different uses, different mileage. So I, I think that's an important point and I appreciate you bringing that up.
And please don't apologize for asking for the bus.
No.
Mr. Fuentes.
Yeah, I guess I'm going to have to back up again and it's going to sound like we're starting all over again, but I'm a little slow on this. On the, on page three, when you start with the operating budget, you know, we had the operating budget 121, 121 million, and then we obligated 100 and almost 120 million so that we, the end of the year balance is 1.2 million, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So before I move on to the next one, so the contract allows us to make or keep how much of that?
None. We have to get anything approved through a year-end spending plan. And once the spending plan is adopted, then that money is available to us to use.
Okay. Am I wrong in thinking that we used to have that?
Used to be that way.
Used to be that way.
But with the last, last iteration of the contract.
It's changed. Yeah, okay. Thank you. I'm glad I asked that question then because I, I didn't see anything mentioned there and I thought that was missing. All right. That's why it's missing. All right. So then the next part, it talks about the FY14 spending plan?
Correct.
And then it has, you know, the 1.7 million and that's where, that's where I started getting lost when we're going down there. What do we, what is that?
The year-end spending plan last year requested a technology refresh as well as the purchase of buses, which we did both.
Right. But that was from last year's.
From fiscal year.
Okay. So that's why that, okay, that, yeah, that, okay, I see why that's on there. So that's just on there that we're just accounting there and it's plus minus. Okay. So that's zero. I get that. So then what's available still? Okay. That's where, I think that's what was throwing me off is that FY14 thing. And then the, you had monies set aside for other obligations?
At the end of fiscal year 14, we had encumbrances for 788,319.
And then that gets added into the 12, the 1.2, and that's how we end up with that?
Right.
Okay. Now, it was the FY14 thing planned that I was trying to figure out why that played into an FY15 plan. So I apologize. Thank you.
Ms. Larson.
Yeah, actually, my questions were going to be about how soon we can get the New Horizon back on, I'm not back on, but up and running as well. And if we would, if we were open to making a mid-year correction. So the, the other comment that I, just a comment that I will make is that really we're so fortunate to have the maintenance staff that we do have out and at, at operations because I know every time I'm in there, they're usually working on a bus that is over, you know, eight, 10 years old and they're working every day hard and they've done a very good job of keeping an aging fleet on the road. And so I'm very, I'm very grateful for that. So.
Mrs. Cook.
I have a comment and two questions. So just to follow up on Mrs. Cordasco and Dr. Constantino's comment about the shape of our community. It's, it's the, the shape of the county and the city and the topography, but also that we're not built on a grid either. So it's this cul-de-sac kind of thing off major arteries. So better land use planning perhaps would make our transportation better. So I have a question about the, the one bus for New Horizons. Will that be the bus for New Horizons or is, will that be added, adding to a mini fleet of buses for New Horizons?
Fleet might be.
It's a bus that we.
Fleetette.
It's one bus that we would dedicate to New Horizons.
So are, are there, are there currently buses dedicated?
Well, no, because we have to use, we have to share with another route, which is why we have to deliver them early and get back. This bus will be dedicated to those students who need to go and come from New Horizons.
So this will change things. It won't just make it better. It'll change and make it better.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. And then also, can you tell me kind of like the timeline? So we're hearing this now, we'll adopt it perhaps in two weeks. Then it goes to the city and county when?
It's my understanding that they will present this on their October agendas.
Will you please keep us in the loop on that so that we can attend if our schedules allow, please?
Sure. Which also, and obviously we couldn't take any action on any purchasing until.
Correct.
So end of October, November, if it's passed and we get it, the likelihood of getting the bus in the second semester is probably, probably why Mr. Snipes is shaking his head no, but we'll do our best.
Appreciate it.
True. Any other comments? So we're, this, this is for us to present to the funding partners as far as how we want to spend that leftover money. The social studies textbook adoption, are we ready to buy textbooks? Do we know which textbooks we're going to, we've done through that, gone through that process to?
Yeah, you actually approved the textbook adoption.
Yes, I did.
In June.
Of course I did.
They were cool. We were just awaiting on funding.
Okay, now I remember that. Yeah. They were the pullouts. Right. Got you. The other thing, this is, this is end of the year money and going off of Mr. Fuentes' point, we had a, we had a budget of 121 and to have 1% of that left over at the end of the years on the correct side of the numbers is, is a, is a good, good feat and good fiscal management on the, on the, the part of the staffs and the administration and all the schools. That's, you know, people see $1 million, they think that's a lot of money, but when you look at it as a percentage of the overall budget, it's really not, not, not kind of in the roundoff arrows in a certain extent. So I just want to thank you and, and all of those in the administration for, for managing those monies in that, that way, in that appropriate way. So I think that's all I had. Anybody else?
I know at times they view our meeting, so perhaps if they view it tonight and realize the urgency of bus ordering, it could be moved up on their agenda for the ethics.
I, I did share with the county and subsequently the city, the information has been shared with both of the boards that you were going to be hearing this this evening. So.
Awesome. And then that would be, give us opportunity to follow up then because I think if time sensitive would make a big difference.
That brings us to our action items for the night. 8.01 Personnel Actions. Is there a motion to approve?
Some move first.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded for approval. The personnel actions as presented this evening. Is there any discussion? Ms. Serza?
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Nichols.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mrs. Cordasco.
Aye.
Ms. Emanuel.
Aye.
Mr. Fuentes.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye. 9.01 Board Members Comments. Any board members have any comments this evening? Mr. Fuentes?
Chair, if we could indulge me for one question regarding, I just, I just saw Mr. Landers here and I wanted to ask a question regarding the software for the payroll system and that it's a.
A techie question?
Yes. And I was, I knew if I asked it earlier, but I just saw him. So, Mr. Landers, if you, if you recall in 1999, you were probably.
He wasn't here then.
I watched it here then.
He doesn't recall.
But you do recall what you were working on, I'm sure. The Y2K program. So, and so in the software, and I wanted to, I just was hoping, and I, I don't know if you played a part in doing the contracts, but I'm hoping that there is a clause in there regarding Y2K and Y2K enablement. Because of the problem, I'm sure you're aware of the people that push it off to the future. And we had, you know, I've had experience with that where things crash when you get to a certain date. So I'm just hoping that, that that's considered.
Well, there, there are a number of provisions in the terms of the contract for failure to provide regardless of what the cause of the outage may be. Gets from complete system outage all the way down to individual module. If an individual module of the system is inaccessible for any reason, there are recovery options for us.
Okay.
And financial penalties associated to that.
Okay. I just, you know what I'm talking about. Yes. Yes. The Y, the enablement.
Infamous Y2K.
Right. That was pushed off. And I guess the magic year is what? The most popular year that they've been using was 2034, something like that?
I don't recall off the top of my head.
But there's, they pushed it off past 2000 just to get past it. And when it crashes, it crashes. Because I, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landers. Good to see you there.
And sorry that I, thank you for addressing that.
Thank you. Any other? Mrs. Cordasco?
I just wanted to say thank you for all the preparation that went into the convocation. I thought it was a good, upbeat, exciting day and especially appreciated the students that participated, the cheerleaders and, and the band, even though Dr. Constantino tried to upskand with several of the pom poms during the, during the convocation. You did a great job and I think, I think everybody felt like it was a good kickoff for the year. Sorry that I was not able to make the luncheon. It sounds like it was great, but I think it's wonderful that our operations staff is also recognized and look forward to the first day of school and everything that goes on with that.
The pom poms went with the rest of his outfit.
Yes, the red pants.
Mrs. Larson.
Thank you. Yes, I also have convocation on, something I wanted to speak on. I think you, well, first I want to thank all of you that played such a role in, in pulling that off because I know it's a huge undertaking and you did, you all do a great job every year. And I think that when people come up afterwards and speak to you, make a point of coming up and telling you, you know, how well you did speaking, I, I think that you should really take that to heart and I hope that you do because, you know, I, I leave there and I'm motivated too. So, and I do appreciate operations letting me crash in on theirs and, and getting to pull the tickets. Though people were getting mad at me. It wasn't my fault. It was totally, you know, I was doing my best to shake the bag up to get the tickets. Just going to say that. Sorry for everybody that didn't get the Redskins tickets.
We're not.
And then.
Thank you for that.
And then just a reminder, open house, high school was tonight, middle school is tomorrow and elementary is the next day, I'm guessing, Thursday? Okay, four to six. And then just a reminder that buses will be out on the road starting next Tuesday and that's something we haven't seen. It seems like this has been a really long break, you know, because Labor Day's not until the 7th. So we can't go back.
School runs until the 8th.
Until the 8th. And so I just want everybody to be aware and be careful next Tuesday because we'll have kids. And I watched some horrific video on one of the news shows this morning with people just passing when kids were walking in front and everything and it's just a real danger. And I know that Mrs. Cordasco. And I know that Mrs. Cordasco shared with us one time when you were on the legislative, VSBA legislated, that one of the counties was going to start with the camera program, and I saw in the VSBA news this morning that, so, but anyway, just a warning, please be careful. I think it was Arlington. That's who was mentioned today, I think, I could be wrong.
It was Falls Church, and they didn't just want to use bus cameras, they wanted to use red light cameras and county cameras and assess the civil fine. It was quite interesting.
So, today, I was, got to participate down at the Virginia Peninsula Food Bank, and there, we packed up bags that are distributed for people that live in food deserts, and I had never heard that terminology before, and it's for people who live one mile away from a grocery store that don't have transportation, and they live further than a mile from a grocery store, if they live in an urban setting, if they live in rural, they live 10 miles or more away. And so these bags are distributed, and we have an area in our own community Grove that qualifies for that. And so that's what we spent the day doing, but the reason that they do this, this day in September is because September is Hunger Action Month, so I would just urge, we have the Erase the Needs Center here, we have several organizations locally, though the Virginia Peninsula Food Bank does serve people in the Williamsburg-James City County area as well. And included in some information they gave us was the piece of paper about strengthening child nutrition programs because of the Hunger Free Act coming back up for authorization. And so I would urge anyone to go to their website, I'm sure they probably have this, but one of the things that they're going to push for is creating a summer program to provide eligible programs with a grocery, families with a grocery card to enable them to replace the meals that their children would have received at school. So, you know, I think there are several things that we as a Board, I know that we've been up trying to find improvements or help, help, excuse me, help the federal government find their way to improvements of this act, and this might be a way that we might want to get involved in, so I will make sure that we all get, you all get a copy of it. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for representing us at the Food Bank. This is the first year in several years that I haven't been able to go, and I was, I feel bad about that.
I wasn't going to call anyone out.
But you can call me out. But I appreciate that. First day of school, as has been mentioned, is next Tuesday. I know several Board members will be at various schools on the first day of school, and I appreciate them welcoming our students back, and I think, and the Board was very well-identified at convocation, so I thank the Board members for getting out there and participating in those events. For the community, athletics begins with the coming school year, golf is well underway, volleyball, field hockey, football, and all the other fall sports are getting started, and we could tell that the, at least the War Hill Marching Band was in very good form. So we'll look forward to that. Any other Board member comments? Okay, with that, 10.01 Upcoming Meetings, closed session September 15 at the county complex at 6 o'clock over in Building F. There's regular meeting to follow that at 6:30 on September 15 in the Board Member of the County. On October 6, a closed session here at James Blair at 6 o'clock in Room 402, and then followed by the work session here at 6:30. I think we have set the agenda for our regular meeting on the 15th of September, and without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.